On the town's website within the next couple of days. If for some unknown reason, you might want to go watch it again, you never know. However, are we ready?
Yes.
Ms. Edison. Call the special meeting with Mahom Bay Town Council together. Welcome in otherwise trying times. You have an agenda that was mailed out to you. There are just a couple of items on the agenda. And we would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Councilor Bain, seconded by Councilor Nowall in favor. Motion's carried. Let's go to the consideration of the development agreement. The public hearing report, request for the development agreement.
Your worship, a public hearing was held on March 19th, 2020 to receive written and verbal comments from the public on the town of Mahom Bay's declared intention to enter into a development agreement with McLeod Group, Health Services Limited, owner of property on Main Street. PIDs have been read earlier. One written submission from Beverly and Donald Dirks was received prior to the meeting and forwarded to council in advance of the meeting. Two comments were received from the public at the public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a second? Seconder is Councilor Carver. On the question, all in favor. Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Set two for that. Okay, let's go to the next item on the agenda. The town response to COVID-19. Mr. CAO?
Yeah, so when the initial decision taken down the office, we had a conversation with regards to payment bills by residents, obviously tracking the people in the offices, posting the hand drop off checks and that kind of thing. It makes it less convenient. On top of that, it discouraged people coming out during the COVID precautions. And furthermore, some people are obviously experiencing issues of income. There is a sensitivity to like it's easier for people. So we had discussed and the suggestion was that I would bring this item forward. A motion is required should council wish to take action to suspend interest or disconnection service, tax sales, any of the above. So the thought of this agenda item would be in order to do this in a timely fashion, we can obtain a motion. And council may wish for us to discuss, there are a range of options in terms of you have water utility, electricity utility and taxation. There's a matter of currently outstanding accounts, new charges and disconnections. So if anyone has any questions or would like to make a motion?
Deputy Mayor, I would like to make a motion to that effect, that the town take all necessary steps to ease any burden on residents of the town of Mahom Bay during this COVID.
As described by the CAO. Seconded by Councilor Bain.
So I'm going to need to insert some things for clarity and then if you two agree, make sure they're in the motion.
Now we have the motion moved and seconded and let's talk.
So I guess as per the CAO in this case, Richard, what I'm wondering is, are we talking about suspension of interest and disconnections and tax sales for both taxation and utilities on existing and new accounts? That would be the broadest way.
For the period of the COVID.
And why are we saying indefinitely at this point and then revisited to reinstate interest and reinstate those things in a way of going? Is that clear to everybody on the table? So I don't need to stop discussion, that's what's on the table.
Second. Questions or comments? Councilor Carver?
Somebody else is ready?
Just as a clarification, is the, does this agenda item, are we limited to discussing the motion as it was defined? Or are we having a more, a broader discussion about the town's response overall during this?
This is just for this one particular item. When this motion is finished, you can raise another aspect of the whole COVID piece. Councilor Carver?
So I'm wondering then is this just interest? I mean, if somebody just doesn't make a payment at all, what would be effectively, is that included in the motion?
So if we suspend interest, disconnections and tax sales, essentially what we're saying is that while new charges in relation to usage will continue to improve, there'll be no interest on existing as of today, there'll be no interest on new charges going forward with utility and things restated. And there'll be no disconnections if someone makes no payments during that.
During that period, but the lack of payment stands. So at the end of the period, the person will have that amount of money to make up.
And at that time, because we discussed that council will actually make a motion to reinstate the interest, then council can determine whether, say, if it's been a considerable period, we should allow for longer before normal disconnection procedures and things like that. So that allows them to be flexible to when these precautions happen.
Would you anticipate a note to our electrical and/or water clients to describe this opportunity?
I think that we will want to do a communication to all residents and utility customers to make sure that this is known. And I will add that we have had requests, you know, essentially say, if there's going to be some relief on this, it obviously is needed to be taken action. So I think we have quite a number of business community residents who will want to hear about this. So we'll have to make sure that we're there.
It's not foregoing there, Chair, it's just postponing it till after things are over.
And I think that's why we should be stressing to our clients that they should make an effort to keep their electrical and their water bills up to date. Because at the end of this period, if they always back payment now and then they don't pay again for two months, they're going to have an even more unmanageable situation at the end of it. But the point of this is that there are people in town who will literally have zero income. There are some changes with EI and the child grant that will help them, but.
But we'll have an opportunity to revisit it, to take the next step. To revisit it then and to assess what kind of steps we want to take then.
And to the mayor's comment, I suggest that we, if we're going to put the actual text together, that we say at the bottom of any kind of notice that we are still accepting payments and cite the manners in which people can still pay. So as to make it clear that you don't have to hold off, to your point. Certainly can still pay them in places.
And partial payments.
Yeah, well, whatever, I mean, no interest is accruing, so any payment is a payment.
And the billings will still be sent out?
Yeah, I don't think we'll send out the, yeah, yes, we would still send out even the tax bill. Yeah, they would all still go out in this because even though taxes will not have to be paid by the usual date, they certainly can be if, for those who want to stay on top of it.
I think it's important to somehow convey that, that if you have the means to pay.
That's right.
You should pay it. The town has a new business and we don't involve money in that kind of taxpayer. So I think whatever the communications is, no, it's the idea of there being exceptions.
We don't want to have to borrow one in a tower in a term.
Certain individuals. It's exactly what I said to you, CAO, it's going to cost us money. Likes me doesn't pay me like.
Yeah, well, that's.
At this point, I'm quite.
No, that's, that's right. That's right. Other comments?
It doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean clear that this does not mean that your bills come through as you want.
No, that's right. At some point, they're going to pay. At some point, there would, in theory, be a disconnection. But it's not going to happen while this COVID thing is going.
Exactly.
Anything else on the motion? All in favor? Motion's carried. You had some other COVID things you wanted?
I just wanted a clarification on the scope of the discussion.
On the which?
Just on the scope of the discussion.
Okay. CAO, are you finished with the town's response to COVID-19?
I mean, that's why I had put the item on the agenda. There are certainly things that other, I think, members want to push, it's an option here. But I don't have other suggestions at this time. Our focus was on most municipalities and we focused on providing some insurance to people that they don't need to worry. Even today, and I was in the office for a fair bit today, a lot of people came by and paid their bills. They still want to, they're still doing it, also with my check, Dropbox. But people do have a tension to keep up on these things. So we just wanted to get the word out if you're struggling to decide which bill to pay.
Councilor Carver?
Mayor, I just want to put on the table that we're, things are changing so fast in the COVID-19 situation. And we're all having to think on our feet. One of the issues for me this week is I've spent a lot of time on the phone in conference calls and doing some damage control and planning and so on around senior safety issues. And it occurs to me that as a municipal council, we have a responsibility to take some leadership in our response. Whether it's messaging, whether it's doing some risk management, whether it's damage control, that so that we could be prepared as a council to have this call a special meeting. You know, if we've got some identified issues that we want to address. I know that a lot of municipalities are being very active in the messaging.
While the mayor works so hard for our programs from town staff, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
That's still open, but we can comment on it as we feel free to. And if needs be, especially for something urgent, then we go for it.
Yeah, I think that's actually a great suggestion that we can specifically put together kind of a weekly update. Because we're a bit outside of the council structure at the moment, it would help maybe council to have a sense of anything that, like we already did with this meeting, said there was an item CPR that needed to come on this agenda. And we can certainly note items like that. And ours, we can talk about how to construct that.
Councilor Williams?
I wanted to thank staff who set up this room. I think that this is a very responsible setup to conduct a public meeting. And just wanted to express my gratitude for that. I think it was Maureen, who probably came in early and did it, or Maureen Kelly.
And Kelly.
So thank you very much. And I feel that this model's extremely responsible behavior. I had sent an email earlier today. I am happy with some of what I understand to be the town's response and a communication that went out to residents to let them know how the town would be doing business continuity in this early period. And I would just like to reiterate that I feel that because there is no provincial or federal directive at this time to suspend gatherings of under 10 members and it is possible to conduct a meeting in a space such as this in a very safe, responsible and public way, I would just like to table the idea that rather than canceling council meetings going forward, that we continue to creatively create this, this meeting setup so that we can continue in a business as usual way to be able to continue to conduct the business of the town even during a growing crisis. So I would.
Councilor Bain?
I had, I guess to that.
Your worship? One second, Deputy Mayor.
I think I sent it out to everyone. I apologize for not doing it. But the suggestion that, yes, we do have some business to do. We should continue to do business, but it was an inference. In one of the emails that it was like voluntary, if you can, by the response of the forum. But I guess my point was that we have special counseling. And we definitely have a need for this, which I described as being a hurry. And that would make sense in attempt to make sure we have a forum just like we have done in Reno and some of the other organizations.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just saying that I'm going to be leaving you. I'm having a tight time here in the audio. So I wish you all the best in the rest of your deliberations and hope to see you all soon.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Stay safe. And just before, if I could, I don't, I agree that we need to keep the business of the town that the council is required to do moving. But I think we can do it more safely. The COVID-19 is on the early, the early end of the curve. And we have to do whatever we can to flatten that curve. And if by having our meeting here, it means five citizens come out to observe and one of them happens to be ill and shares it with other people or shares it on the way, when there really is no need of it with the electronic meeting format, in particular, the CAO and the clerk are talking with the IT people and we would be able to put our meeting on YouTube, televise it. And Councilor O'Neill has some other opportunities that may enable us to do that. So we would literally be sitting in our homes, having this meeting, using our laptops, while citizens could be sitting home, watching it on their televisions or on their internet, their computers, if they might choose to. Well.
Pardon me, the MGA.
Okay.
No, I don't know the MGA.
Councilor O'Neill is the.
That was also my concern, just to get a better sense of what is specifically in the MGA and whether, and the CAO prior to this meeting, and perhaps he can share some additional details, that the consideration for holding electronic meetings is really more to do about having a public, a public meeting, which would be addressed by, which would be addressed by having a live streaming session. And I'm not the expert in the room on the MGA, he's sitting to my right. So I would let him, I would let him explain that further. But it would seem to me that if we would be in a position to conduct electronic meetings and be able to vote, that there would be no necessity then of changing our council meeting schedule as it currently stands.
Would you like to respond to the MGA?
Yeah, well, so I mean, not a lawyer, so I think that's, I'd say, there are a lot of different interpretations around, you know, what it is to satisfy the duty of meeting in public. And essentially, you know, without court challenge intensively, it's never really going to be 100% of the interpretation as to when I meet in public is actually going to be confirmed by a court as it goes. So would I suggest that we conduct a public hearing, that we conduct it tonight that way, where that is the most likely subject to have a direct financial precaution? Court challenges are more likely to occur. So no, I wouldn't. I think in the case of public hearing, this is the only option that we've got legally speaking. But when it comes to a regular meeting of council in general, I think that would be consistent with the MGA. I'd just think of the number of municipal units that are taking that implication. And the key to it really at this point is allowing for the public to, in a live format, actually follow the progress of the meeting and in the meeting to be able to make, you know, comments, at least that they want to be able to. So essentially, if it replicates the normal experience of attending a council meeting. And we're thinking we're getting to that, we're thinking we're getting to that point technologically. It is, you know, it's a pity we didn't have exactly that to begin with going into this. But this is a new circumstance and all the units are investing their own mentally. I do think that very shortly we will be in a position to do that. And I guess that brings to the second point that council made with the current meeting schedule. And Mr. Carr, I suppose that really is more for you, for me to comment on, although I will say that based off the decision that you made Monday, we did cancel the council meeting on the 26th. And we have now passed a normal, we go to public submissions for that meeting, making it even trickier if it were to suddenly resume because we're now close enough that we can't put items on the agenda for it. But I see an obvious why the council meeting on the 14th won't have an answer in time to.
Before moving forward.
Yeah, so it would wish to be April 6th for the beginning of that.
Yeah, for that period, yeah. If I could just add that the issue around the electronic meeting has been on the NSFM table for about seven years. And every time it came up, there was no joy from municipal affairs. Then the whispers started because Kings County was doing it anyway. And Yarmouth was doing it anyway. And we have a policy that we do allow for electronic participation in a meeting, but you can't vote and you still have to have quorum. And just a second, Councilor Bain, and the chap, or the person who allows you to achieve, you can't have a distant person allowing you to achieve quorum. So now the Minister of Municipal Affairs Office is telling us and telling Yarmouth and telling anybody who asks the question, the Municipal Government Act says this, what you have to do, what you have to do to make your situation work. These are unusual times, they call for unusual measures. And I think if we can get the electronic meeting to work, particularly with the live video feed to the public, they could possibly have the clerk's cell phone number if they wanted to call in with a question while the meeting is going on. Or mine, they can, mine's published, they can have mine. Anyway, Councilor Bain?
I just want to add, I mean, I supported the whole idea, it was just this meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
But I do need to be very clear that if we not have any time to.
Oh, no.
There's absolutely no security. And that is one thing that I think we have to keep in mind.
I can't guarantee I'm being hacked.
But I stress that that's something we can't, that's something we need to discuss.
Well, if we need any camera, Richard will all sit around your truck and head that way. No, you're quite right, Councilor Bain. And that's, it's worthwhile to keep that in mind, that even if we can get this to work, we cannot do it in cameras. Councilor O'Neill, would you have a comment?
A motion or is there any more clarification, more direction to staff?
So I mean, I'll just tell you, as I currently understand it, meetings are canceled. And what we'll do is as soon as we have a technological solution, which our intention, of course, would be to have something next week so that it could be ahead of the deadline for the issue from April 14th. As soon as we know, we'll send an email to council and the council will say, all right, that was good. Let's go ahead and do our schedule. Well, that's my understanding.
So we would entertain a motion, if I could, to give staff direction?
I would make a motion now that we proceed as if the April 14 meeting will proceed as scheduled on the condition that staff is able to provide a mechanism that's sacred.
And just for clarification, would I include, like, should we not be able to come up with a way to satisfy the public viewing of a fully remote meeting? A meeting such as this where the public attendance is pretty good, but the live streaming happens of the in-person session?
Which would include the opportunity for the public to push.
Because I know we can manage to live stream a live session. The challenge right now is just live streaming and proper information. So that, that would be acceptable to me?
Yeah, so I'm adding that part with the provision that it include a vehicle for public representation.
Seconder? Councilor O'Neill, moved and seconded. All in favor? Motion's carried.
So before, excuse me.
Yeah?
Before we use the topic of COVID-19, I just want everybody to know that in the community, there have been a lot of questions about, where do I get information, where do I find out, where do, and there's a lot of anxiety around that. And the government is really stressing the importance of channeling information through, you know, standardized sources so that they get information about resources as well. So the 211 is the place to go. In local, there are local efforts right now to develop like local directories. But in general, 211 is the place to go for information. And that should be a message that's coming, going out from our office as well.
And is 211 the source of information around things like EI? Or do you contact the appropriate Service Canada office or?
Service, I assume Service Canada and 211 would redirect a caller. And you can access 211 through the telephone, 211, online by searching, online, or by text. I can't remember the exact number, but you can text.
Maybe a note on the town's Facebook page on the 211? Okay. Anything else on COVID-19? Pardon me? Do we have something?
May I?
Yes, only, we'll make an exception, appreciate that, because you traveled a long way.
Might be helpful. So we will be one of the few employers, of course, that will be, continue to be up and running. And we normally do provide meals on wheels. Lions Club informed us that they were going to suspend that, I believe, out of concern for the drivers. I just simply want to let you know that it could become worse and it could become very difficult for some seniors, particularly around food. We will continue to be able to offer that service. And we could help in terms of ensuring the safety of that delivery if we get to that point. We are dealing with this in other areas where we're preparing the food, putting it in safe containers, providing plugs and equipment. So if we get to that stage and you become very concerned about some of your citizens, please contact us and we will try to help.
Is the Lions Club aware of that opportunity as well?
We, through one of our staff persons who, Michelle, we're trying to stay in touch with them. What I understand from the Lions Club is seniors who were accessing it, they've got some friends and family who are supporting them right now. It's more of, I think, if some of those supports fall apart. I just want to make sure. And to your point, of course, because of who we are, we are also getting quite accurate information. And Providence to the Department of Health is the preeminent source for provincial. 211 is acting as the service information provider that updates local services. Federal government cited Service Canada for federal. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to know this.
Thank you for the input.
Very interesting to me because I deliver meals on wheels.
What is it?
See, that's interesting to me because I deliver.
No one told you. Yes. Councilor Carver?
Yes, I actually have a question for Mr. Duff. May I, may I ask Mr. Duff a question, please?
Sorry.
No, because I think it's really important that we talk with each other, even in the middle of a council meeting. The provincial government today gave $10,000 to every senior safety program in the province and $50,000 to community links to cover the provinces that aren't covered by senior safety.
cover the, the provinces that aren't covered by senior safety, um, and the, the message from the government, from the deputy minister, is that each community can develop its own project with that, with that $10,000, um, so, uh, I think that's, I'll, may I, may I contact you after this meeting, Mr. Duff? Thank you.
There's also a possibility, when we talk about keeping counselors up to date.
Yes.
That we could connect through our laptops, it would not be a meeting, it's a sharing of information and updating, and share the message with your neighbors to keep an eye on your other neighbors, right? Keep an eye on each other.
I think that kind of information comes out to our laptops and stuff would be very helpful.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you, anything else on that?
Yes, as long as we're breaking protocols slightly and discussing food.
Not breaking protocol.
And discussing food.
He paid me to do that.
That would be breaking protocol. I just want to acknowledge The Biscuit Eater for a moment, which is a local, uh, cafe who, um, who on the topic of food security, has offered to provide meals for people on a takeout basis, on a sliding scale, so, uh, Jessica Hepburn, uh, one of our business owners, is very concerned that everyone continues to eat healthily, and, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that as a very generous, um, a very generous, um, gesture that, that The Biscuit Eater is making, and if you have an opportunity to let your neighbors and your community know that that's available, that, um, I just, and she would love it if people put her on.
Thank you. All right, don't forget to buy loans. Uh, letter number four, temporary born resolution, it's in your package, last page, I think? Yes, there.
Should be the last page here. Do you like to speak to it, Joe?
Okay, unless it was missing.
You don't have it?
No, I saw it.
You have yours, Joe?
I've got. So, yeah, just to be grateful to speak to this, uh, just prior to Christmas, we signed a loan agreement with, uh, Riverport Electric, where we are jointly purchasing, have purchased a piece of electrical equipment, uh, council discussed at the time, it determined that we would be debenturing the portion of the equipment, uh, that was being purchased by Riverport on their loan from Bahama Bay, so this is that, uh, temporary borrowing resolution that allows us to participate in the spring venture issue for only that half of the cost of the piece of electrical equipment we purchased in the line. So we didn't initially expect to be participating in the venture issue, we didn't have the budget, because it was a decision just prior to Christmas that we would do it this way, uh, but Municipal Affairs Committee will get us the C P R in time, and it needs to be fast, before we can participate in the venture issue, which we, is going ahead and scheduled early, so, uh, this will give us permission to do that.
Right? Questions? Mr. Bane?
Counselor Man.
No, the venture issue can be used, so they, they get all of the amounts, so that's what this is, and then by the end of this month, the total amount, they go out to the market, they get the interest rate, and they let it run out, so we'll know by Friday.
Right? Entertained a motion?
So moved that, that entered into the.
The whole page, just, you don't have to read it.
Whereas section sixty-six of the Municipal Government Act provides that the town of Bahama Bay, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, may borrow to expend funds for a capital purpose authorized by statute, and whereas the town of Bahama Bay has adopted a capital budget for this fiscal year as required by section sixty-five of the Municipal Government Act, and are so authorized to expend funds for capital purpose as identified in their capital budget, be it therefore resolved that under the authority of section sixty-six of the Municipal Government Act, the town of Bahama Bay borrow a sum, or sums not exceeding $116,462.23, for the purpose set out above, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, that the subject be borrowed by the issue and sale of the ventures of the town of Bahama Bay to such an amount as the council teams necessary, that the issue of the ventures be postponed pursuant to section ninety-two of the Municipal Government Act, and that the town of Bahama Bay borrow from time to time a sum or sums not exceeding $116,462.23, in total, from any chartered bank or trust company doing business in Nova Scotia, that the sum be borrowed for a period not exceeding twelve months from the date of the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing of this resolution, that the interest payable on the borrowing be paid at a rate to be agreed upon, and that the amount borrowed be repaid for the proceedings of the ventures when sold.
Seconded, Counselor Carver?
And then I have a question.
Would you read it again for us?
I couldn't do as good a job as counsel now, um, but I do have a question, um, about why the item that we want to purchase with that money is not included in the citations in the brass sections, it's only up there under the pile number and the electric utility line of traffic.
It's a good question, I'm surprised it's not, um, that being said, this is prepared by Municipal Affairs, if we just attach this to our minutes, so that's what they, they want us to do, and.
So what we give with money is not as important as the fact.
Well, I think.
You take the second.
It just seemed odd when I was reading it, that I'm reading this, the money for.
Whatever. Okay? Moved and seconded? All in favor? Motion's carried. All right. Anyone have anything else they would like to add? We should do these meetings more often, this is two meetings in a row, I think, that we're, we're less than.
Power.
That's good, okay, entertained a motion to adjourn. Seconder? Done, we're gone. Be careful, people, bump elbows with people, don't shake hands, don't hug, no kissing. Be careful.